You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
All right, we're being 601, probably 602 right now. I'll call to order the August 8th meeting of the planning board here at Wyndham Hall. I'll start with the roll call. Scott Self will be on here. Richard Lane here. Mark Stalera.
Yes.
Brandon Self here. Michael York is not here. Victoria Ames.
Here.
Selectment's rep, Charles Harbick.
Here.
Steve Malone alternate.
Here.
Michael Stungeo alternate. Amy Dunson alternate.
Here.
Okay. So I will seat Jane for Michael. And in tonight's agenda, we have under applications and public hearings, we have a boundary line adjustment application. Southwest Community Services and Swansea Township Housing Associates, in partnership with the town of Swansea, have requested a boundary line adjustment to transfer 3.2 acres of land area from tax map 110 lot 70 through tax map 110 lot 71. The remaining lot 70 will be 5.1 acres and the expanded lot 71 will be 3.7 acres. Both properties are in Village Business District 2 and Residential District. Under discussions and other business, we have site plan modification discussion on the new form and any other business as may be required. Moving to the top, we have the approval of the minutes of July 25th, 2024. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
Okay.
Motion to approve by Brandon with our second.
Second.
Second by Richard. Did there any further discussion, Jane, through your operations minutes? I have a few clarifications to make. Let's see, it would be on page one and it would be the last paragraph on page one where it talks about Porton Portion submitted a memorandum stating that he has not reviewed the requested use for space at the hyperbaric chamber. What he said was that he had not approved, he had not reviewed the requested use for any other use other than the use requested. So just need to clarify that.
I think you've been corrected.
Oh, has it?
I think the minutes back from something until today.
Then, okay.
There's changes and it was like it was corrected.
All right, and we have another one, which is the first paragraph on page two. It's two sentences up from the bottom. It talks about, maybe spoke about the safety issues that they comply with. They have the Swansea Fire Department do a hydrostatic test to assure that all is working properly. The fire department witnesses the test and do not perform the test. Okay. And that might be implicit.
I don't know if this matters, but on page three, we were talking about electron, it's under definitions. It's the second paragraph. This is an electronic version of a permitted uses spreadsheet, not a definition spreadsheet. Sorry, say again. It talks about email and electronic version of her definition spreadsheet and it's actually permitted uses. You couldn't see the document. You'd have to keep what I was talking about. It should be permitted uses. Yeah. I don't know definitions.
Okay, anybody else on the minutes? Then all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, good.
I'm sitting.
All right, you stay because you aren't here. Okay, so that moves to applications and public hearings. I'm out of butter on this property, so I cannot do the meeting. I'm handing it over to Richard and Brandon, actually also who's no butter. I own the property, but technically we're both the butters, so we're both stepping down from the meeting. I'm going to see Steve for Brandon. Yeah, that's it. And I hand the meeting over to Richard.
Thank you. Okay, what we're considering is PD 24013, the boundary line adjustment application. Southwest Community Services and Swansea Township Housing Association, in partnership with the town of Swansea, have requested a boundary line adjustment to transfer 3.3 acres of land area from tax map 110 lot 70 to tax map 110 lot 71. The remaining lot 70 will be 5.1 acres and the expanded lot 71 will be 3.7 acres. Both properties are in the Village Business District 2 and Resident District. Is there someone here?
Here.
Okay.
Speak to this.
Speak to this, please.
Sure, thank you very much. My name is Keith Tebow. I work for Southwest Community Services. And I, being on a lot of boards myself, I always am a little concerned when I see a single issue on my agenda, but I hope this is not going to be a difficult meeting for you all and that this action will be helping me to bring something to the full circle that I've been trying to do for quite some time. The SC has finished off this development and we're very proud of our cousin development that we finished over in 2000 or just after 2000. Remember 2001. It's been very successful for us. It was a big investment in the West Swansea Village and I'm so proud that the town has taken upon itself to continue that investment in this village. So it's a precursor to this. I'd like to just say how proud I am of this village and what I've seen happening here. And so that all being said, and we're proudly property owner here in the village as well. About 15 years ago, it came to my attention that the fire station, excuse me, the West Swansea Fire Station was sitting on what, 3.7 acres, a third of an acre roughly? And at that time, I looked at this map as a gentleman had, so to speak, and really felt that we should be able to do something like what I'm going to propose tonight. But unfortunately, at that time, we had investors still in this deal and they were very risk averse and they didn't want to do anything without a whole lot of legal, a whole lot of legal review. And so we sort of backed off of this at that time. In the interim, the investor has exited the deal, as they should. And these are 15-year deals, so on year 15, the investor exits the deal and now Southwest Community Services controls the limited, both sides, both Limited and Partor and General Partner for the partnership that owns this development. It's typical how these are owned, but we're both, we sit in both seats now. So we control the property. So what we'd like to propose to do, what I'm doing here tonight, is to propose to you a boundary line adjustment, which, again, I've contemplated, had this contemplated for a long time, where we're able to, through this boundary line adjustment, we're able to increase the area of the Swansea Fire Department station to over 3 acres of land. And the town gets the bulk of it. With that boundary line adjustment, the town would also get the bulk of the frontage on the actual land down to around the corner and almost no frontage to remain on our property. So on the Southwest District property. And that's really it. We think that the ownership of this is, will help, obviously help the fire station be able to expand its land, be able to maybe expand its footprint if it chooses to and do whatever it wants to do with the extra land that it has. And nonetheless, hopefully create yet even better fire. That facility, the department of the facility could become better in the future. And there's a whole lot of people that utilize this little area to take pictures of a bridge on weekends and technically they're parking on our property or the property owned by the development, which I think is would be much better in the ownership of the town. Much like it's, and the town has done such a great job across the bridge to the other side where the park has been built and has done a great job from what that was 15 years ago as well to what it is today. So we'd like to contribute to that. We'd like to give the fire department some legal room. And literally with this little boundary line adjustment, there's no property being sold here. No anticipation of any, any being paid for the property or anything. It's really been my idea that it's been rolling around like 15 years of what we should be. This is how this property should have broken up appropriately. We still retain 5 acres, which is the minimum. I think there are, we still retain 5 acres, which are acres. It's important for our development to retain all of our zoning, our zoning area. You want to maintain our private zoning, proper zoning on that property. But the rest of it, you know, my next hope is that right across the river in the mill, in the former Warren Foot Factory, that that also, maybe this, I don't think this will spur anything there, but my hope is that this, in the net, in the village, this is the next, so it seems to be the next, next big thing to happen to make the village continue its growth. So anyone has any questions, I can answer those. If here has any questions, butters or anyone else. But that really is what we're looking to do, is to just transfer this property into the ownership of the town, primarily for the, for the use of the fire station so it can be a kicking grow asset.
And I just want to add a quick note here. Prior to this, prior to this adjustment taking place, the fire station lot was a non-conforming lot. Being at 0.3 acres, it was under the minimum lot size for the zone district. With this adjustment, both lots are now inconformant with lot size advantage. So this is now fixing a non-conformity, which is a possibility.
Yeah.
Or this, excuse me. Or this, then, we're eliminating the existing boundary line and the fire station is part of it.
Exactly.
Okay.
There'll be a new deed drawn up that will, with the recent bounds that have been developed through this planning, Development Home and Associates, a new deed will be drawn up for the fire station property that will properly reflect its boundaries.
Okay, so the fire station property is going to extend now from the street all the way back following this line to the river.
Yep.
Along the river, right up to this corner of the bridge, with the mid corner of the bridges. And then more frontage as well, this boundary line issue. Is it going to be strictly for the fire station then? Or is it going to be town-owned property?
It's town-owned property, yeah.
The whole thing is going to be. So where, if it's the town-owned property, where's the, where will be the outer boundary then of the fire station? Or can it expand as far as it wants to?
I mean, it depends. We haven't had any proposals from the fire station.
I'm just asking.
They could reasonably expand if they wanted to, but they'd have to come through this board to do that, so.
And also, Michael was saying that if the selectmen will actually have to hold a public hearing, right, to accept this land. So there'll be an opportunity for concerned citizens to go to that selectmen's meeting and discuss intentions and what the town's thinking about for it.
Yep.
So, but from a planning perspective, it's pretty much just up to us to, concerning with the boundary line adjustment.
Any other questions for the board?
Yeah, I was wondering, what do we know about this land? I mean, is there wetlands here? Is there any kind of contamination of any kind, anything that we should know about?
I, sorry. I, I haven't dug deep into that aspect because there's no buildings going up. With simple law line adjustments, I don't really think it's necessary to do that deep of a review until there's development happening on the land. So frankly, I just haven't looked at that yet. But if it's ever developed, then we will certainly look at it and so will conservation permission.
Curiosity question.
Yeah, we really need cellar hole of the bucket factory that was there on that property. You don't have to go very far on the left. And then kind of behind the fire station, you can see about two walls on the left of the factory that was there. Just come, I think from my experience. The way I understand it, it was a hoop roof that made buckets. And they can transform the bucket to a thing in the middle. Cross, cross something from rolling. There was a, then for buckets at the hole. But if you walk back to it, it's kind of neat to see and imagine it, but do pass.
Are there any overflow concerns in the river, outside the property? Where any kind of land can draw shit to the?
There's a fairly high bank.
It's a high bank.
There. If I remember correctly.
It's pretty wide. It can take quite a bit. I saw it at Tyco this year and it didn't seem, it didn't approach too much on this project. Since they've reached a dam, it seems to, does seem to work pretty well. I had my reservation for butters at the time, but it does seem.
Too much once.
Maybe.
Any questions from butters or?
Well, I think that I, I don't think this is a problem.
Did you identify yourself?
Excuse me, I'm Rick Robins Show. I live right across the street from the fire department, 35 Main Street. You know, there is a catch basin that they put in when they repaired the bridge and did all the work on Main Street, just to be right in the fire department if you are facing it.
Okay.
I think that's going to take care of some of the wetland problems also. Because that was put in to catch the water, to silt out the silt while they were working on the river. So, I mean, to filter out the silt.
They did that when they took it there now?
Yes. Yep.
I'm sorry, yes.
I might have a question. I, I approve of the subdivision for the town of Swansea. But to the town of Swansea has to rule if they have a gift, and this would be a gift to them. They need an appraisal of the gift and that will be done at further times, is that what I understood?
I have one. I have an appraisal. I have it in hand, I have an appraisal of that.
Current, 15 years ago?
No, no, current. Yep.
And could you tell me what that, that amount was?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but I can let you know. I'll let Evan know. I'll check with him. I don't have it off the top of my head. It wasn't, it wasn't mine.
I don't have it on me.
Six, say $10,000.
Yeah.
It's no development potential there, so.
Hey, sir, email me, I can get you that information. I'm not sure.
They just doubled my value on my property, so I'm wondering, oh, Cameron chose this.
So if you email me, I'll talk to Mike Brinley and we can see if we can get that to you.
Thank you. I certainly do approve this for the town of Swansea and follow rules and regulations.
Cross the T's, O B I's.
Thank you, Brandon.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from butters?
One other question. Is the land currently on the tax rolls and will come off?
We do pay taxes on this property. The taxes that are paid on this property are determined by an R S A. We have probably 10% of our, what we take in for rents. So it's not based upon the, you know, like you and I, our houses, it's not based on the value of the land. It's based on the amount of, the amount of rents that can be, that are collected or could be collected. And it's all, and that is all set up in a hidden agreement. So, yeah, this, this will not affect the town's collection of that in a negative way.
Any other comments from board or?
So I guess more procedural, what is it we're actually assuming here? Because I heard that 15 years ago we found a selectman.
It's a boundary, you don't have to ask anything.
Okay.
And probably boundary line adjustment contingent upon. If you have any question. I don't think we don't need to maybe contingent upon that.
No, no, I don't think so. I think it's just.
Good question.
Yes.
And this makes.
Do you identify yourself, please?
Colina Loravie.
Okay, thank you.
And this may be a silly question, but if later down the road we discover that there's pollution or something on that section that has to be cleaned up environmentally, that now puts that burden on the town, correct?
I'm not sure how that would.
If the town has the land, why wouldn't it become our problem? It would become the town's problem.
Like, like this?
I live across the street from it. There's a lot of stuff down there.
No, I'm not sure if we can, if we could make it a condition on accepting it, that we can do test pits or something like that to determine whether or not there's any pollution in the soil?
That would, I think, that would be a question for the town board if they accept the gift.
If the selectmen do it.
Yes. So for us, the question is, is the line here or here?
Ma'am, I always strongly recommend you attend the board's selectmen meeting.
As long as I can do that, I'd be happy to.
Absolutely.
I think too, if you're, if you're talking about across from your house down the hill. If, just for a second.
Do.
Yeah, for the small one, I think what you're going to find is that we're going to keep that. This is the boundary line being proposed. Here's the fire station, here's the ski lift up here. So people are down here. It's still, it's still our problem.
Okay, I was just thinking along the river.
Well, right here, they're dumping down.
No, I'm not talking about things that I don't know that people are dumping down there now, but I'm just thinking from past businesses that were there and things that were left behind. The new surface over years.
Agreed.
My house until 1841, I have a lot of stuff surfacing all the time.
Interesting.
Some village. Any further comments and questions? And then I'll entertain a motion from the board to accept or the boundary line adjustment.
So good.
Seconded.
Like Victoria's, yeah, seconded by.
He's not seated.
Yes, he is. For this.
For Brandon.
For Brandon.
Okay. I'm sorry, you didn't, you didn't tell me that. I knew Jane was seated, but I didn't.
Yes, Scott is seated, yes. For Brandon.
Fit forward.
When Steve, Brandon left the front.
Oh, I might go to visit, go, I'm not tracking.
And Steve is the man. Okay, so we have a motion and seconded, law in favor. Seconded by Steve.
Motion.
Was made by Victoria.
Seconded by Steve.
Again, all in favor.
Right.
Opposed?
Thank you. That is our next step. Appreciate your help.
I have a question.
That's true.
There the ball, okay. Okay. Thank you.
I, too.
Fuck, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna re-see Brandon and unseat Steve.
Take it away.
No, Brandon, please, I just had to. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't see Jane as well. Thank you.
I see the Jane from Michael York, which is this. I just.
Yeah.
So we're moving on to discussions, other business, so being the discussion about site plan modification, the new form discussion, and we have a new form in our packet. Version 3. This is a favor. Yeah, let's see. So everybody gets a chance to have a look at that form there. This is for a.
I had another fraud.
Minor site plan modification.
So.
Hey, guys. You guys play just a little bit of line.
Listen, I've asked this question before. So often I want to know why, okay? So what if the project statement that clearly describes the proposed modifications in the site, if somehow it raises that question to ask why? You know, what they're hoping to accomplish by modifying this site? Can be possible? Because I feel like that sort of teases out and that way we'll know if they tell us why they want to do it. We'll know if they're going to accomplish it by wanting to do it.
Well, doesn't that come up in discussion? You know, they, they can propose anything to the board. You know, when it comes to the board and the board starts discussing it, that's when those questions are answered, you know, why are you doing it? Why not this way? Why not that way? Your thoughts?
But my thought was that part of the objective of this form was to sort of help people clarify their thinking before they get here so that when they walk in, they can say, here's the problem. Here's what we want to do to fix the problem.
Yep, I thought about that. It's a good question. None of our forms go over the line usually. And so the why is important and it's something that needs to be discussed.
Yeah.
On a form, it's tough. You're going to get a lot of wishy-washy answers. I, no, it's, it is a good thought. And it's why we have, it's why we have a meeting, really, to get to the root of the line. On the forums, if we can, I like it to just be facts. What are we looking at?
They'll already have a reason anyways, otherwise they wouldn't be filling out the town. They would have a reason to change something on the site plan so they can be able to tell us why. But, yeah, the project statement, that should be clear for the board to take a look at and see what's going on there. And, you know, they can plead their case before the board and say, why? Why not?
I had sent an email inquiry on that we should have a section in there for staff comments.
I got it on the back. I got it on the back. Oh, that gives you the wrong one? Oh, I think you might have picked up the most version.
What? Oh, I just, yeah. Okay, it was just on the back.
Yep, so I'm planning on having a nice big empty box on the back where we can, during our comments. I like to have it on the back. That way the front's nice, clean, you know, back. It just gets comments.
You're talking about comments on if it's approved or not approved?
Nope, just mainly, so if step on the mic, if anyone on the office.
Staff comments.
Yep, so if we have concerns, because there's no memo that goes with these.
Yeah.
And so it's, it move a memo.
I said, yeah, I don't have that many to insist on.
Oh, okay. I think, yeah, I, I were.
With the older ones.
Oh, there we go, okay.
There it is. So I had a modification, maybe of the second line, the second box. It says a scaled site plan clearly showing the area to be amended. I'm thinking maybe instead they should provide an updated copy of the original site plan showing modification. They should say that because they, they need to have a, they had a site plan on record in order to modify it. It was already there. So telling them just to bring a copy of that with their changes to the board.
I think it would be a different version.
Still, site plan shows existing conditions and proposed modifications.
Yeah, that was a change. So I think what happened was that you guys maybe got draft two.
Yep.
And this is draft three. So I apologize for that. I took Victoria's comments to heart and that was, it was a good suggestion to make sure it's clear, existing and proposed. Happy to chat, you know, if, if, if we just say bring approved site plan with modifications. I think that.
I think the board would want to see the approved site plan. You know, they have a sealed plan and they bring another plan and scale and might not be exactly like the one that we approved. But if we hadn't brought probably the one we approved, it's all on it. You know, signatures and everything, what we approved. So if you can just mention the approved site plan, it can be the scaled site plan, but it's got to be a scaled approved site plan.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion to make.
So where the approved site plan or some of the written ones I would see recently has opposed to then bring something else.
Well, I see, yeah, something more elaborate we're looking at. So if they had a site plan filed with the office or the planning board approved, we shouldn't make them do a whole nother big site plan just for this modification because we approved a site plan. They can bring that in, but if they want to expand the property or something like that, that's our chance to say, okay, bring in a scaled copy, you know, a little bit better than you come here. I think that would cover it better than making room for the whole thing. And they don't need to, because obviously we've approved something and they just want to modify it.
That's thinking kind of like they might have been dead, the more updated base of plan and we'd be much clearer in the file. Would they still need to bring the old one? Just to see it?
It's still, I think it still gets back to the plan that was approved by the board. You know, they can bring in a different plan and it looks a whole lot better and everything, but that wasn't the one approved by the board.
If they have another plan, we should still require them to bring.
They can submit it with it. Bring a copy of the approved one that we approved so we can flip it all. I think.
Well, if that's a way of encouraging, you can watch it very well.
Well, up to them, if they want to bring more information, that is fine.
Yeah, but that way that, that updated plan would be useful for future site plan review. Because if ever goes to be honest, the scope and modification updated and experienced. So that means, you know. And between draft two and three, I did change, I meant the history box. Instead of having file number, I just put approval date. That way we know when the changes may. So I know, I think we have file numbers, but for ease of, for reability, I think approval dates just.
So where the paragraph starts out, "Site plan modifications are changes which result divinable impact to the overall site layout, origination properties and plans that do not require a public hearing." What are we talking about there? I had that crossed out online because it's kind of, I don't know, ambiguous there. I had crossed out and I modified it like this. We'll start from the beginning again. Site plan modification are changes which result in minimal impact to the overall site layout or adjacent properties. And I added that there. Then after that, at the planning board, at their discretion may determine if modifications can be processed as a site plan modification at a regular meeting. I, I added at a regular meeting or will require a public hearing. Because there's, the planning board still has a discretion when they come in to say, no, this is too much. We need a public hearing for it or not. So that kind of clearly lets them know that the planning board will be determining that at that meeting, whether they can do it at a regular meeting or will require a public hearing.
Yep, and if it ever does go to a public hearing, then we'll have to stop and notify. The letters.
Of course, yeah, they do. But if they'd be able to determine one way, their situation, it's gonna help.
Seth's expectations.
They let them know, yes. I do think it's still important to include that you guys still have that ability to raise this to a full site plan. If you feel like it is necessary. Thoughts?
Not willing to simplify it.
Still, maybe that's just the ability of the.
Yeah.
But you want, you want a site plan.
I still.
Like a small company or whatever.
I do, yeah.
Something minor. I still think somebody like.
Those are good comments and a challenge. I think those, we, we will improve that. But it also does need to read, they can raise it to a full site plan because that's, that's another one on top of that. Because it could be a full site soon.
One of the, on the second one, the scaled site plan that shows existing conditions. Excuse me, existing conditions and proposed modifications. Existing conditions, does that improve as currently developed?
We modify that to, to say that they're bringing in a copy of their approved site plan. That will, we are gonna have things to see.
You can have an approved site plan, but that doesn't mean that it was followed.
Right, but that's up to code enforcement. We are not enforcement. We can't enforce it at all. This board does not have that kind of power. We are just to look at the site plan. So if they do something wrong, it is up to code enforcement, which is such a selectment and they determine that the code enforcement does not.
You know, it's a, it's a good thought because if that does happen, that might be a case where we either do a full site plan or.
Yeah.
And it, or it might be a case where that's part of their modification to incorporate the changes that they posed in. As a part of, yeah, just so we get it on.
So shall we?
I've seen where we've gotten that out of people. Too long questions.
So shall we simplify that paragraph? Site plan modifications are changes which result in minimal impact to the overall site layout or adjacent properties. You cross that out and say the planning board at their discretion may determine if modification tend to proceed when it goes to process as a site plan modification at a regular public meeting or will require a site plan review and a public hearing.
Yeah, I didn't.
All right.
Will require?
Will require, not may, but will. Site, I mean, will require a, a site plan review and a public hearing.
I'll take a photo.
So we're looking at more or shall?
Either way, I think.
Shall, shall's a more definitive than we. Shall means must.
Yeah.
Either way, yeah, it shall's fine. So everything else is about the same there. So if, if we do this, which we should do, that we should have a form for the modifications, the small modifications, site plans. But we need to put it into our site plan review regulations, giving ourselves the authority to do that. Just having to mention in the regulations, I said, what requires it, what it looks like and all that. And I wrote down, and I'll give this to you, I just wrote it on the back of this thing. So this would be under section five, under general, on our site plan review regulations. And I'll just read down the thing and it'll start there. So it would be a new item number six and you don't have to, you don't have to put all this down. I'm gonna do this again. Number six is gonna be under minor site plan modifications. It'll be A and then minor site plan modification may be approved at a regularly scheduled meeting without a public hearing if the board determines that a proposed minor modification is, one, minor in nature and conforms to all requirements of these site plan regulations. Two, conforms to all the conditions of the approved site plan. Three, would not alter the general layout and use improved site. Then have examples, there would be examples of a minor modification. There would be minor change in the location of utilities, et cetera. Minor adjustment to the placement of a structure. Minor changes, minor change in species of a tree or shrub in a landscape plan layout. Minor change in location of a catch basin or drain. Replacement of a structure in the same footprint, the original structure. And item C would be modifications affecting the files. With that, it would be I, modification, any modification that affects the butter and in parentheses, setbacks, screening, traffic, lighting, et cetera, will require a public hearing in accordance with, I'll say, six, six, four, one, four, I.
Will or shall.
Pardon me?
Will or shall we pull it for the three?
We're not gonna start that again. We'll use the shall, huh? Okay. For me, cross that out, shall.
Did you shut up?
What? I'm rever, this is to go on the. General. Seconded by general, it'd be a new number six.
Okay, adding my.
Yeah, it's the number six.
There's three things right in your site plan. He's adding after number five, so they have a court session.
Pretty much it just describes what a minor site plan modification is and gives a few examples as to what it would be to give to the board's attendance, like what it's supposed to be, anything else. Anything bothering the butter or anything like that would have to come for some plan.
So then we will define minor.
But that defines minor pretty much, yeah, in that, in its level. Yeah, this doesn't give every example of minor, but this gives examples of it. So you know, the board has something to, to discuss them. Has never, basically, you're asked to decide whether it's a minor or not.
Should any of those examples not be minor? That's the case. Probably to make sure we have the words in there that it's still a profession of the board.
It is, yeah. It's always gonna be.
We're doing the catch basin, the catch, the deal, then we look at on that and you know, this is what we always.
Yes, again, yeah, if the planning board decides that it is a big deal, even though it may say, mention a catch basin or something like that, the planning board can back up their determination and apply the permits.
Can we include language in the start of that section? Including but not limited to.
How about shall?
No. Including but not limited to.
Yeah, we can put that in there, including but not limited to, or just that's something.
Well, it wasn't specified.
Yeah, I suppose you could hit with that anyways, either way.
Will but not limited to limits that exposure.
That's, that's pretty common, like, because we, right, I'm sure we can.
Yep. And again, you know, we're gonna need probably one more discussion. You're gonna give this, Adam, you can type it up, or take away whatever. And if our, at our next meeting, we'll have one more discussion and make any changes to it. And then if that's okay, then we'll go to a public hearing and then amend the site plan regulations and then it will be from. So that's how it'll work. There'll be a few meetings. So good. Thank you all.
There you are. Do you want to talk?
No, I'll trust you with that.
I'm just gonna have a phone, I'm gonna do it.
So, so Adam has given us a photograph here. And this contains the industrial park over in North Swansea. It's right here, Sanford Drive there. And that red outline little, I think there are two properties there.
Three.
Or the three properties there. Those properties want to be regarded under the business zone, which is across the street. Rather than included in the industrial park. And this is just to look at, to decide for town meeting next year, could it have to go under an amendment to the zoning ordinance? That that be rezoned as a business there.
But why is what they asked to?
Yep, several of them have, we're, we're still gonna be reaching out seeing the third, but they have expressed interest in the.
It gives them more use of for their property. Including multi-family actually, because industrial park doesn't allow multi-family under all various does. But speaking of which, that lot eight is the new multi-family lot, is it not?
Oh, I had to check.
Yeah, that's where they're putting that up. So if we redefine those lots of business, we probably shouldn't include number eight because that goes out in allowable use there.
I'm happy to bring that, bring that as a description.
I think that might make sense. So we all know what we're talking about here, right? Again, this won't be until town meeting next year.
All right, we changed that over to the business. Oop, standard individual wants to go in and buy those three properties or those three lots and put an industry in there. What are they going to have to go through in order to get that in there if we change it?
It depends what's allowed. If it's change of business, then everything that's allowed in the business zone can be put into there, which actually are more uses than industrial park.
Well, what I'm saying, what I'm asking is if a developer consent wants to buy those three lots and then wants to put an industrial building in, what is he going to have to do in order to get out of the business park to look to put the industrial in?
Well, again, it depends on, on what use it is. There are quite a few, might not be industrial uses, but business uses that would be allowed there. If it's, if it's something that's not allowed there, then obviously you have to go to the zoning board of adjustment to get a variance on it, like these guys had to do. And they may or may not get a variance, but there are more allowable uses for the business zone as there are. And then there are for the industrial park zone. Different uses, of course. There are a lot more special exception uses in the business zone as there are than there are for the industrial park. And there, those houses there are not in allowable use in the industrial park. They are in allowable use in the business zone if they've already been there.
So then, then ask the question, so that's a tip district, it has a certain regulation.
That's right, yeah, very. I don't know, it's a good question.
Zoning, checking on that, because that has, you know, specific financial.
It does. And it's coming up on the 15 years, I think.
Yeah, it is coming to an end, yeah, I don't know.
No, you're right. I think you're right. We'd have to check with. I don't know.
Come on, Mike, Mike Brerly. We've been talking about the tip district, yeah, so we, we will discuss that.
But that's a good point, thanks.
It might be a whole.
Yeah.
Those.
Yep. Good. Other business, as required.
Just a question. I'm wondering, do we have the capacity to index our minutes? Yeah, so that we could, you know, look up search words in our limits.
Yeah. I think the way that's handled now is just Ctrl F, honestly. Indexing minutes.
Yeah, you can do it. I don't need to know how, I just wonder whether we can. If you, well, you have access, oh, they're, no, they're, they're PDFs. Yeah, right, you can't do it. Within, within the town office, if I were to come in and say, could you find, you know, instances of whatever?
It would take a while, depending on what, you'd have to know what minutes.
I'm just, is that, is that a software package that maybe?
I don't, I don't know. Yeah.
You have to buy a particular, well, I don't think they want the public changing anything in the. And if, and if you're going to be searching, then you're actually going into the document, which they won't allow the public to do. That's why they're PDFs. Okay, I was just thinking, you know, I was looking for some information. Can't change it. And I didn't know, I didn't know what date.
They can still search it for, they search information, I think, because I'm taking this into the.
We, that's our, our, our agendas, that we could do easily. Couldn't, could we not index our agendas?
I think I'm confused about what you mean by index.
I mean, so I just want to be able to look up what, what was the date on which we discussed a particular application?
I would love that.
Because this is, she is so. I have everything, I have every document that I've ever created accessible to me. Yeah. Okay, in a separate folder. Yeah. If you were to ask me. Yeah. I could actually search for a particular word even. Yeah. In that, in the documents. But, but it's actually, what I'm looking for is very simple, like, you know, applicant, you know, the gas station. When did we approve that gas station? So that I could go directly to. The problem is that the PDF, the PDF. But if we could just index the, yes, the PDF is also indexed, but the agenda.
So the only way.
Anyway, anyway, just a thought.
You can find that information in the lot, of the lot and, and where it's held in the land use office there of the drawings and everything else in there. And you can cross it that way.
Yeah.
So long as it's been entered.
Yep, just wherever the lot number is and property is there, you go in there and check that out, then you can find what we've done.
So right now, you just gotta talk to us and we can help you find it. In the future, I'm hoping all of this can be digitized and searchable.
Searchable.
That is going to be.
Just a thought.
But please, please call us if you need that, because we, we can help you find it. We have a tough time finding that information as well. We can find it and we do find it, but it might, it might take a little bit.
Yeah.
Victoria, you're thinking that if we can find what date of the meeting, then.
Then I can get into the minutes, I don't have to, you know, search around. But Victoria, I'd be happy to help you if you had a specific request. Thank you. As long as it's not, you know, a whole bunch of people. Yeah, a lot of people have to do that. Thank you.
The worst stuff. All right, what else, what else do we have here?
We have, I don't think determined whether or not we're gonna do a second meeting in November and also in December, the 26th, our second meeting is the day after Christmas.
Really?
So do we want to do both months back to back? Meetings?
Yeah, one week and then another week. Again, it depends on what's coming in, you know, we're getting nothing nowadays, so.
If we have it on the schedule, then that makes it a whole lot easier to cancel.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're talking about. That makes sense, yeah, it makes sense to do that.
Your thing, everything's supposed to be three weeks out.
Yeah, maybe we ought to do that, you know, schedule the meetings back to back and if there's nothing, then we cancel it.
I just saw that, those dates.
Want to do that?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. We'll have to do that back to back and that is for the, what is it? The November meeting, back to back meetings and the December meeting, back to back.
Which was November?
November and December.
So have both meetings on the same Thursday?
The second, the third week, is that the same?
Yeah, second, yeah, second and third, yeah.
Second and third.
Cool. And then another matter thing, there was these staff seeing the final site plan from Blueberry, where he's locating those things.
I have that mic, you can come to my.
Okay, and Batla, their project by the airport. I'm getting.
Catol.
Catol, I'm sorry.
The new housing new building inside.
I'm getting complaints, the fact that, that one building has been there for over a year now and there's no siding on it, there's nothing and not really much else going on.
Again, yeah, that, that last mic, it's been off there. That's a, that's a totally inspector thing. I, I kind of smiked them.
They've been more footage for the.
The footage that's there for almost two months now.
Yeah, they've been there for a while.
Yeah, we did brush. Still nothing.
Anything else? Well, we may or may not know that we have a, another fire station advisory committee on, on board going again. A few of us from the planning board, Mark is on it, I am on it and Michael York is on it as well. And again, we're discussing the whole thing about the fire department in North Swansea, or Swansea Center one actually, but putting one up maybe in North Swansea here, the location of it and all the things that go along with it. And just wondering if the board has any input on that or if you can think about it. Committee is a big committee, 20 people in that committee, so it's gonna be going on for a while. And we're just, you know, putting things back and forth as to what it should be. There's been a lot of discussion on other sites other than the one that was chosen that they purchased that house on up there. And it hasn't really been determined whether that's off, you know, off the record or not, or what's gonna happen there.
So you mean that the six times they put it on the ballot, the six times that it got shot down wasn't enough for them to realize that that's the crappy location for it?
But it hasn't really been determined what's wrong with the location before you go looking for another location. for another location, and the committee hasn't discussed this at all, but I sent an email that I did, Jay, saying that we do have to figure some of these things out as to what exactly is wrong with that site, and determine whether it's in the running or not in the running, before you go looking around at other sites in the town and what the town owns and stuff. So anyways, that's there, the size of the station, everything is there, it's gonna be discussed in that group. And again, any input that the planning board might have, I can take to the board, or Mark can take to the board, or the.
Meeting, they're open to the public as well, so.
Yeah, right.
That, that location is absolutely lousy.
Because of, because of what? Because they're gonna be discussing that location, so we need to know what the problem is with that location.
Blind.
Land site.
One of the biggest complaints.
Is it really, it's a blind location?
Yeah, it is. You come up out of, like, coming up out of the swell, south, northbound, and you're coming up and around the corner.
Yeah.
And then dropping down.
From the, where you come up and meet the road, and you're, you're in something at least as high as a pickup truck, certainly higher. I, I don't see the, the site problem there.
Nobody has a big problem.
Maybe I need to drive.
No, but he's talking about the fire equipment there, I agree with you, he's talking about the fire equipment, they're sitting up high.
Right.
In a vehicle, yeah, other people coming up the road might not see it, but they're gonna, gonna see, the guys driving the equipment is gonna see up and down the road, and plus, I would imagine they would have some kind of flashing lights.
Oh, they sure will.
Letting them know that something's going out.
Yeah, I didn't, so I, I didn't know if it's, if it's the site, or if it was the price tag, or a combination of both, and very, very well, it might be the latter there. Certainly, whatever input we, we get from anybody here, you can take that to the board or.
But I think it's a combination of both the site and, and the cost, but what other locations are you even contemplating?
The, they're talking about the post office up there, which, yeah, I mean, the post office is still using that property, it doesn't mean, you don't even know if, you could add that property, but they've talked about the post office up there for one, right? Bring one on Route 10 where Nick's Restaurant is. And they don't own that property, obviously.
Still gotta come across the bridge.
They've talked about buying more property, or purchasing, or somehow getting more property in the back of, of Town Hall and expanding it there. They've talked about a Carlton Road, Road site, I'm not exactly sure which lot it is down there, but it, one that floods exceedingly, so that is probably out.
Then Del, Del drop.
Talked about Del's property, which is right down.
Just south of the web.
Yeah. And they talked about Ken Grapebatch's property down here on. Punishville, that's right, that's the other one, Punishville. So all those, the property down here, Ken Grapebatch is in the flood zone, so that probably would be out.
And there was another property just north of Savage and Sock Farm there.
City, city property they want, they're interested in leasing. Yeah.
But that's, not, not a problem for that.
That's Keen, that.
Yeah, and Keen.
Possibly, long-term.
So, yeah, that's been talked about, and just really the function of the fire department has been talked about, and we've discussed in the meeting, and probably will be discussing more, the fact that the Cheshire County has their services right over there in North Swansea, which is emergency medical for everything, and the trend of the calls of the fire department are trending towards medical and not fire calls. So they're, big time, they're going that way, more medical calls and fire calls. So something that needs to be discussed with the committee is that, you know, when you move this fire station up there, because it's got to come out of Town Hall, I mean, got to Town Hall because of the fumes and that stuff, probably should be focused on a fire department, and not necessarily reduplicating the medical part, but because we already have that in our town, luckily for us, it's right there, and the response time is probably quicker than our own response time.
Exactly, for my house.
Yeah. So, yeah. So that's another, and James, you?
I, I wondered if, it crossed my mind, when we were looking at the plans tonight, with more room on the fire department side of things, would that decrease any of the problem about the fire station? If they expand it over here, could they expand enough that they wouldn't have to be under the, under the Town Hall?
I think response time is, is there a concern about that? Response time to a fire, not the medical, of course, because medical is right over there.
I got that.
But fire response time.
You're talking to somebody that lives on the other side of the bridge, no matter where you.
No matter what, yeah.
Unless you put it in Nick's.
How many did that take you more Swansea out of it?
Yeah.
And then you're taking North Swansea out of it, if you, if you relook.
Right.
They also discussed whether Keem would take over and service North Swansea.
They used to.
I know they get like a first call or a second call, something like that, over there.
We had them at my house that one time.
Well, they can get called, they can respond to our stuff, because nobody shows up from this town, of course, you know, they're gonna keep on calling to somebody.
So most calls do come in for North Swansea and then West Swansea.
Yeah, that's where the majority of the calls are.
But those calls are primarily in this cause.
They are, yeah, they are, and.
Straight across the board, right, from West Loop, it's both over there.
Yeah, both sides, it's, it's medical calls is what the majority is, and.
Changed.
We discussed also about the senior housing building going up over there, Four Soroy Bells, and more calls were there, but again, more calls probably gonna be medical calls over there and not the calls for the fire department. So that's, I think that's something that our committee, that we're on, gonna have to really define as to what we're talking about, the fire station there.
That'll end here.
And is the, is the equipment that they have in Swansea Center, they have one engine, they have a 3,000 gallon tanker truck, and they have a truck over in Swansea Center, and is that efficient enough, or is that servicing the town now? Or are there problems with that getting out into a fire? If it's, if it's not, if that's the latter, that, that they are doing fine with the equipment, it's just that they have to move it from Town Hall, and that kind of tells you about what the size of the building is gonna have to be to house those, maybe one more bay. They have three bays over there in Swansea Center, maybe one more bay, and a kind of starting point there in the size of it.
Here's a novel idea.
What's that?
Put the, on the former Ferguson property, put the Town Hall there.
Which property is that?
That's the one that they, they proposed to put the fire station.
Oh, okay.
I think that gives you a break, or I am. I seem to wash my dishes.
I don't know how it would fly, but putting a single-story Town Hall building there, and then converting or adding that, that extra bay into where the parking area is behind the Town Hall now, you know, what would be your cost to do that versus trying to do the whole fire station deal up there?
So let's say the, the third or fourth bay for, for the Swansea Center station would go.
Go towards.
Towards the school?
Yes.
That way there, yeah.
You cut in, you cut into that back parking area to create that.
But you said you want the Town Hall, you said, what, 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 some park?
No, that's exactly.
Definitely something to, to, you know, bring up the committee, if I don't, you bring it up.
No, you're gonna bring it up.
It is, it is an idea, you know, we're, we're looking for any idea.
Use it with me.
Yeah, I will.
Well, the public can attend those meetings.
Yeah.
RL, there you go.
No, that's thinking out of the box.
When you secondly meet.
But definitely, pardon?
When do secondly meet?
When or where?
Both.
Oh, when we meet here, and it's not, it's not a set thing. I think, next week, I think it's set for Thursday at, at like 6:30 here, next Thursday, but we just had a meeting last Monday, was it? Yeah, Monday, so it's, it's kind of, I think he's pushing it along a little bit to get it closer to time limits on town meetings.
There's, there's one other point that you can make to the group.
Yeah.
And that the bays have to be much taller, because the equipment, as they're replacing the equipment, the apparatus.
Yeah.
They're getting bigger and bigger. And so one day, a new one day would be significant.
Well, you still, you can still jack, if you had to, you could still jack that new building.
Could, but it does make sense to build them tall to begin with, because you've still got the same footprint of the building, you're just going up a little height, that's not a problem at all right there.
Because every, when they buy new apparatus, they're getting bigger every time they buy.
They really even have some space around the aircraft, so that can do it properly.
Yeah, I think that's part of the problem, what they have, they don't have enough space around the engines, you know, over in Swansea Center, and the fumes come up into the Town Hall. I think those are the two reasons that they're moving it out of there.
A number of people voiced concerns about making sure that this center stays kind of a historical center. Sort of taking a building that's, you know, fairly old, and the Town Hall was 100 and something years old, and trying to kind of continue to make that, a fire station might not be the smartest thing to do. You're just saying, some of the opinions are in voice. So I even talked about the potash ball, right, you know, converting that, using that land.
Yeah, talked about that.
Don't be happy about that.
Feeling that, that's kind of a unique thing in the center.
Look, it's going to, yeah.
Just a cinder block stage now, you know, it's not like an historic Town Hall building. The potash ball.
There's not much room there, that land comes down, they'd have to stake a lot out of that room, that land back there, they don't have room for expansion, the property that they have now has room for expansion if they put a smaller building there. And if they did one on Route 10, obviously, if they bought, which I doubt they ever would, but bought Nick's Restaurant there, they'd have plenty of room there. But other than that.
Kind of defeats the purpose, though, if they.
It kind of does, yeah, it kind of does.
Because there's no way of getting to North Swansea without going over a bridge.
Yeah.
You gotta loop down around here and then go up.
Yeah. And they also talked about combining East and Swansea Central stations, and I don't think that went over too well, which, you know, again, it's Swansea's spread out, and those satellite stations serve a purpose, that's why they're like that, so response time.
And Scott, there's another thing in contention. What do people want? Do they want to see a new station be a substation, or be like a headquarters? So that would determine the size of the building. If it's gonna be another substation, you could, they could build a, a station that's half the cost of them when they proposed, which would make people happy who are worried about cost, right? But if they want a, a centrally located headquarters. Then you're gonna have to have a poor building, and that's what tosses costs up, so that's need to be determined by the.
It does, yeah, and pretty soon, too, you know, we need to determine some of these simple things right off the bat before we start discussing a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, you can't discuss the, the cost or the size of the building until you determine whether it's a substation or a central station, main station.
And it would.
And it'll be a different format, I believe, so.
Yeah, it probably would be a substation over in Swansea Center, just because of the fact that the medical is covered, pretty much covered by Cheshire County, and we pay them anyways, and we're going to continue to do that, so might make sense just for a satellite station over there with four bays. But, yeah, I sent an email to Jay, he's the, Jay Ward, he's the chairman of the board of the.
Doing a great job.
Committee, yeah, and he's put a lot of work into it, it was, so, and if I'm not, I might not be at the next meeting, so if I'm not there, you guys bring, you know, all Michael's in here, to ring the stuff.
No pressure. So the, the other thing is, you know, whatever we build, we should build it smart so we can add additional bays on, we can add, if we ever have to go to a fade fire department, we can add, you know, the additional space on if we require.
Yeah.
It's building smart as well, we're not, didn't even get to the, like, everybody probably focus on the location.
Probably should nail that down, yeah.
And probably go there.
And choose a location big enough to go down like that.
That's all for us.
Maybe take a look at some of the old plans, but then again, when you get the architects involved, since their commission coincides with the expense of the building, they're on their own, you know, rule to make it, you know, small and economical, they want the biggest thing ever, because, you know, they're in business, they want to make their money. So if it's designed and laid out properly on the piece of land, in terms of expansion, future expansion, for whatever, then it should be designed accordingly to those, not letting the architect do it, but letting the town do it, say the architect, here's what we want, the size, and then do it.
I don't know if it's the, if it's fire departments generally, or architects generally. They like all the bells and whistles and frills.
Well, probably a little bit of both right there.
What?
Probably a little bit of both right there.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. But there is a difference between either one's. We have to, we have to nail that one down, too, with the committee meeting there, and it's gonna be tough, because there are quite a few fire members on that committee as well.
There should be, but.
There are, and as, there should be, you have to have good input there. Another thing about that that keeps on coming up is that the future of the fire department, they're talking about, no one is volunteering anymore for those. They're having trouble finding the firefighters there, and that is true, they, you know, what are they gonna do? A full-time fire department probably is not gonna fly to us.
Step in three stations.
Yeah, that'd be tough, we're gonna say.
The, what used to be the North Swansea Community House, and is now, you have Dakota's headquarters, did, did the YMCA buy that property from the town, or the town donate that to them?
As far as I know, they owned that, way back, when, when they set that up over there, I recall, they were in the, I don't know if you were on the.
I was on the floor.
Yeah, and I thought they owned that piece of property over there.
The YMCA owned it?
Yeah, yeah, it's like, like a house thing.
They rehated the whole thing.
Well, I know they rehated, but it used to be the North Swansea Community House, and I, I thought the town owned that.